Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, good morning, welcome to Lorain County Commissioners' meeting for Wednesday, August 15th. Ms. Lori Kaskowski has the dog.
Usually give me the little dogs, that's why. Today we have a black-lab mix from our dog kennel. We have about thirty-nine dogs there, they usually give me the little dogs, so it must be running low. She's about three years old, lot of energy, makes her be a great pet. If you're interested in her, you come down to our Dog Pound on Saturday after 3:00, she'll be available. And if she's not your cup of tea, you can check out our website and see what kind of dogs we have available on a weekly basis if you want, or come down and see what we have in person. So, we'd appreciate your help, we need you to come down there and make that be your first stop when you're looking for a dog. Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk?
We have a tax abatement in a prize zone for L&amp;W Engineering, Inc. and Avon Plant, LLC, a wholly owned subsidiary of L&amp;W, which calls for a seventy-two thousand square foot addition to its Avon facility at a minimum of fourteen million, two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand in creation of twenty new full-time jobs. Abatement will be for ten years and real property at seventy-five percent, and Avon Mayor Smith is here, as well as Dawn Dane from L&amp;W.
Awesome, thank you. Mayor Smith, can you go to this podium for us, please?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We've kind of been working on this for a couple of years, and it's not just twenty jobs that were created, there are sixty jobs that are going to stay here. And give you just a little bit of history, L&amp;W came in when the previous company and/or chain of companies folded, being very candid, and they came in just to buy the equipment, and it was going to be taken back to Michigan. But their manager of the company that was there had about twelve employees, and there was a part they needed turned out, so they stayed for a while. Well, the while turned into, they added up to sixty people, and now they are going to stay, they need to buy the building, they need to buy the twenty-three acres around, and they've saved the sixty jobs that were there. Fourteen million to seventeen million dollar investment is one of the largest ones we've had. We've had Manco, which is now Share Tech, and AJ Rose, I think were the only ones that exceeded the eleven, twelve million dollar bracket. So this is a very, very large investment in the community, and before they'll make the final investment, we have to get the tax abatement and the tax credits, and I'd like to thank the county for what they've done already. Pam has done a great job for us, and I also like to thank the manager of the company that has held him here long enough for me to get my lunch hooks in to him. But, we, you know, we did everything we could, there's sixty people that'll be very thankful this year that they got their jobs saved, because these are blue collar jobs, they're not easy to come by, and twenty, and I'm sure that this is just the start, because they got twenty-three acres, they have approximately, what, sixteen facilities over the United States? And it's a family-owned company, and we look for a lot of good things in the future for Lorain County, so. I don't know how many more of these I'll do until I retire, which is shortly, and I'd like to thank the county commissioners for all your help that you've given us, and the county, all the help they've given us, and Pam's done a great job for us, and everybody over at Team Lorain County has done just a tremendous job. You've got to move fast on some of these things, and I think the people from L&amp;W, I think what put us out front is the fact is the county and the city could move at speed to make it happen. You know, they, I, sometimes I think that everybody came in just to see if, you know, we could do it. Well, it's been done, it's been done through the county, it's been done through the city, and I'm not going to be labored any longer, but I'd like to thank you, because there are sixty people that probably would have lost their jobs unless they wanted to travel with the company, you know, a lot of people want to stay in their own home area. So, Christmas isn't here yet, but I think for the sixty people working there, I think it has. Thank you.
Thank you. Awesome job. Anybody from Team Lorain County want to speak on the issue? No? Anybody from the company? Well, welcome.
Good morning, I'm Dawn Dayton, I'm the Director of Community Relations with L&amp;W, headquartered in New Boston, Michigan. I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you, thank Team Lorain County and the City of Avon for making this, I'm going to say, one of the least painful processes that we've gone through in the last, in recent history. So, thank you very much, thank you for taking the time this morning to consider this, and we avail ourselves to you, and of course, the city as well.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Mayor, just had one question, the schools, they're okay?
Yeah, they did not have any protests or anything, no letters, it just, the way I...
We're getting yelled at, we need you to come to the mic, otherwise you won't be able, they won't, nobody will be able to hear you, our guy behind the, the man behind the curtain.
Sometimes people appreciate that when they don't hear me. Right now, the building is about a two-and-a-half million dollar building, and if they left, that would be devalued, the school would really lose. Right now, and I've been around for a long time doing these things, and I always hear that comment, "Well, once the abatement's done, they're going to move someplace." Well, when you take an abatement where you're going to get probably somewhere in south of a million dollars, and you've got a seventeen million dollar investment, doesn't make much sense. The school understands what we do, because they've not put up any, and I talked to their clerk, and they had no comment, really. We have to do, you know, and I know that the companies that come in, when schools ask for things, the community of our industrial and commercial people in Avon have always come up to the plate.
I knew you would, I'm just glad that you did, actually reach out to the schools and talk to them and that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I was a board member for twelve years, and the only reason I became mayor is because I wanted the city to be able to buy something more than a pair of socks in the community, and I wanted to make it a city managership, but that turned on me, so, that was sixteen years ago, and I made that request, and here I am.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mayor, you do a great job.
Hate to see you go. Do you want to call for the question?
Well, he'd like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the tax abatement.
Second.
Anything further, Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That's all the tax payments.
Just, okay, do they need to take this with them?
No. Under resolutions, we have no job and family services bills, no investments, so appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
No travel, bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners' authorized various personal actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorain County Commissioners.
Mr. Cortez?
I do have a number of potential hires that I want to talk to the Board about at Job and Family Services. It should be pretty quick, but I have the paperwork from them. I also want to update you on a matter of ongoing labor negotiations, specifically with the Department of Job and Family Services Wage Reopener. Both of those topics are allowable under the Sunshine Act for executive session talks on X's conclusion of our regular board meetings, say we go into executive session, discuss those items. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approve of the reading of the same of the County Commissioners' meetings of August 8th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb? Proven enter and officer and employee healthcare benefits program with Village of South Amherst effective September 1st, 2012 through December 31st, 2012.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Cortez, is it just the two people, or is it City Council? Who's all...
Yeah, I was a little confused by this one for a while, we've been working on this for a little bit, because the group was so small. Apparently, they only provide healthcare to their two employees. In my quarry, it appears that they don't provide that benefit to their council folks down there. If they do, none of them have chosen to take advantage of it. We had to do medical questions on this, any time that you take a group that's this small, the potential for adverse selection and buying claims is pretty, is pretty large. The group is, you know, somewhat larger, at least it'll settle out the claims over the, over the group, but two's, two's very difficult. But it's also difficult for them to procure healthcare insurance at a reasonable rate, anything, anywhere near reasonable rate for their, for their employees. And of course, we've been running this consortium now for over twenty, twenty years, and been pretty successful at it, so we just picked up another political subdivision into that insurance. One day, maybe, we'll be able to work with some of the larger organizations and have them take a look at what we're providing and collaborate with us on that, too.
Okay.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Under transit established trial basis route to Cleveland.
Mr. Cortez?
Well, we've kind of beat this thing to death. Every time I think that we round a corner, we run into another small obstacle, and this one happened to do with the parking, at the parking ride over at, potential parking ride over at the Board of Elections. I think I have that worked out to explain during the presidential elections, the Board of Elections gets very crowded with temporary employees, and they have a lot of different needs that they're addressing, and so the parking gets pretty tight there, and I want to thank Paul Adams for giving me a call, because he was reading, you know, that the stuff we were talking about in the paper, I had not realized, because that's a huge parking lot, and you go by there usually, and there's half a dozen, dozen cars back there at one time, but not, not much more, and so we worked out a solution. We have persuaded the folks that own Gorgas Catering Hall to allow us a few days to use their parking lot, which is right adjacent...
At the mall?
At the hall, to park employees. And we're out there right now, looking at the Board of Election parking lot for how we could, you know, deal with putting a parking ride in the back and turn radiuses and so forth, to use that facility. I think we're going to be able to work out the bugs, but it's just every time you get some place, you run into another problem. I went out to the Port Authority Complex yesterday, and looked over the area by the maintenance garage for a suitable location for a shelter there, to have folks picked up there, and of course, I was down at the Transportation Center yesterday. We need to get our benches out, because we weren't using the bus slips down there, we had taken the benches out, because they were providing a...
Sleeping quarters?
Yeah, well, it was a magnet for, for some folks to stay overnight.
Right.
So, we need to put those back in, and we're getting the rolling stock ready, all we need is to go ahead from the Commissioners now to give this a test run, and we have, you know, we need to print up some flyers and get the word out, but I think that we've been getting a lot of coverage on this, and I've been getting emails and calls on it. Question is cost. We, I anticipate that we're probably going to need, we're probably going to need about four thousand dollars a month while we, while we try to transition in this, which is substantially less than the overall cost, because remembering, anything we produce locally, we get to match with the federal dollars. And the fare right now is two-eighty-five, and I recommend anywhere from seventy-five cents to a dollar, what I want to call an extended service fee or something, because it's a little bit more costly to run into Cleveland than it is to just do the local commute. But, that said, you don't have to do that either, and you can take a look and see how it works, and if you want to add that later, I think you, you can add that later on, depending on what kind of cost we, we come up with.
My first thought was to charge more, actually.
Well, that's why I was talking about putting a supplement onto the fee. Or you can put it on, then you can redo that.
None of this is set in stone, so it's a trial, trial and error.
I think it's going to be more error than trial.
More error than trial, I hope not.
You know, there's a lot of unpredictability here. Yeah, I was surprised to get those emails that people actually want to come in here, come here. With the way we've set the route up, it'll take them a little bit of time, but if they put the effort in, they can get most places in the county. We've been able to link this with both our Lorain and Illyria route by coming out of the Transportation Center and the Commercial Complex, and then linking the Lorain route with the Illyria route up by the Board of Elections. It'll be, it'll be a bit of a time issue for them, but they can get most places they need to go. I just don't know how much the ridership is going to be, and I don't know what the overall long-term cost is going to be to us. The buses hold twenty-two passengers, they have two handicapped spaces, if those spaces are used, then that takes away six seats, so you could, you know, theoretically be down to, you know, sixteen seats on the bus. I don't know how many, how many folks would ride it that would just use those spaces, but, you know, our maximum load is twenty-two passengers on each bus. Our estimate right now is we're running numbers at, you know, about twenty-five percent load, and we'll go from there and work up. I'd rather improve than, than have an overly optimistic estimate and not be able to achieve that. And, of course, I want to do advertising on the buses. If they're going to be making these runs, I want to get the frames up, and I want to see if I can generate operating revenue. I think I sent you guys an email, we've been wrapping a couple of the buses, we've got some, some income from the wrapping. At one time, when we would do, when we worked a little hard at this on our rolling stock, we were generating almost a hundred thousand dollars a year in that revenue. Now, if, any revenue we generate from the advertising, we can use as a local match to the federal dollars to offset the, the cost of doing this. Once they get the frames up, we've got to get out there and, and work the revenue side of it. Problem is, you know, every time we decrease employees, we decrease the ability to, to do that kind of work, but I'm, I'm certain that we can sell some advertising.
The Ohio Lottery bus looks very nice.
It, it worked out very, very well, and I think we, we end up making about, maybe about a thousand dollars overall on that whole thing, but that's two thousand, because we used that against our local match for federal dollars. So it's important for us to generate that, that revenue on, on the advertising. So, we're going to be working on that again, especially when they're, they're going into Cleveland back and forth, we think that there's some potential to sell some advertising on a rolling billboard type arrangement. If nothing else, this, we may be able to swap advertising for other things that'll enhance transit services.
Great. Any questions, comments? Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, my concern is, we talked about the maintenance of our facilities, we really haven't gotten back to that, and we're looking at putting in general fund dollars onto this without really talking about the six hundred, just under six hundred thousand dollars that we were going to come up with, and I ran into the sheriff, actually, at Dancing in the Street in Amherst, at that festival, and he told me that their fleet is, needs to be replaced, and they're looking between eight to sixteen vehicles as well. I'd like to come up with a plan first, as far as doing our maintenance on the facilities, and then also replacing the vehicles, so we have an idea of how we're going to pay for that, if we're going to take notes, or bond it out, or just use the general fund dollars before we move forward with this.
Okay, we talked about notes, didn't we? Like, construction?
We talked about it, but we...
We had, there never been any decision up there, nothing had been talked about, and I asked them the same question at the same event, actually, Tom, about the vehicles, so, yeah, we need to start a plan on replacing vehicles. I don't know if we need the whole, it says total vehicle cost, totally five-ninety-two, but with everything else up to eight-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars total cost, if we start doing a phase-in of vehicles, and again, a couple hundred thousand a year, whatever, Jim, what's our options on doing vehicles? That actually has to be a...
What we used to do is, we used to, each budget year, we would allocate a certain amount of money to fleet retirement and procurement. We haven't done that in a number of years. Now, let me make this clear, the sheriff's fleet is not the only fleet that is, is in dire need. While I'm usually concerned about them, I'm also concerned about the domestic relations courts and the fleet there, and they've...
I had a question, I'm wondering their vans, could one of the sheriff's department vans be used for those local runs for DR?
It, it's, the potential's there.
They have an ask for a Ford E-350 van that they use for court transport, well, they're asking for an E-350 to replace a two-thousand-and-mile-a-year vehicle on the fleet. I don't know what kind of work it needs.
That, well, there's probably some potential, and as I pointed out to you repeatedly, you know, Mr. Messer has worked with me with regard to, you know, vehicles that we've moved over there that weren't completely suitable, but we've made them work. It's been a long time since we bought a new vehicle specifically for a purpose, and they, they have, have some issues with those, what their, their rolling stock is now, and they're real. If I didn't think so, I wouldn't be constantly talking to you about it. But we need to come up with a, with a long-range program, so that these costs are flattened out over a long period of time, and that's what we, we used to do. You know, clearly, we need to get back to, to doing the good management we did before the money became a big issue, and, and plan for procurement going into the future. The problem is, if you bulk buy a ton of vehicles right now, even if you borrow the money, five or six years down the road, before you even pay those off, we, you know, we don't, we don't buy on a five-year basis, then you're, you're right back where you started from, so...
Right, that's almost got to be a write a check for it as we go.
Well, we've always done, we've always been able to save for our capital needs, and, and, you know, plan out for a few years, put the money into, into a, what I want to say, a modified capital account, because if you queue construction, then it's, you've got some issues with how it comes back and forth. And one of the things that we kept us strong with our rating agencies when we did borrowing was that we hadn't borrowed money to do capital, capital work. County always financed it from cash resources, and that, that really plays well. It's not a big negative to borrow money to do that, but it's also a plus when you're able not to have to do that. And of course, the worst-case scenario with the rating agencies is when you got a, you got a stopgap, borrow for operations.
Yeah, we don't want to look at that.
That would really, that, that one I probably couldn't, couldn't explain away to them, that, they, but there are communities out there that, that do short-term borrowing in between influxes of revenue to, you know, get, to bridge that gap between the expenses and the income.
I know we have to, I mean, I had agreed to with our capital expenditures to go forward with, you know, a hundred, the six-hundred thousand, we'd sort of like marked off on that list, and I don't have my capital improvements list, I know we're talking about that today. About six-hundred thousand, we could pay off rolling in the notes over the next four or five years, we'd normally put two-hundred-and-seven or two-hundred-and-eight thousand in that account. We just had a upgrade on computers at the judicial, but we still have a hundred-and-fifty, but if we were to move forward at committing a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year towards taking care of that first six-hundred, that's the roof at the Board of Elections, we had some concrete work to do. Again, I don't have my...
The roof, the roof at the Board of Elections has to be done.
Yeah.
Okay, you know, I, I don't want to end up, you know, when you drive down the road, and you look, and we have one of those tops on the roof, because we haven't, we haven't gotten anywhere. It needs to be fixed, and it's, it's well past its service life. The, the, one of the things we've got to do is, we've got to go out and get some, get some bids, and start that process, and commit ourselves to doing that roof. The other, the other issues you can, you can discuss more fully, but that, that must be done.
Well, we'll go ahead and do that, then, while we're talking, after we get through this motion, or do we just...
Well, I can, that's an administrative issue. The, the, I can, I also can tell you that, you know, we, we met with Johnson Controls last week, and I've asked them to take, I'm going to ask them to take a look at the Board of Elections HVAC, and that's going to slow the roof a bit, because we got rooftop units there, so, depending on how fast that moves, depends on what we can do with the roof, and I'm also probably going to ask them to look at the Job and Family Services building, the, the HVAC infrastructure there is, you know, coming up on twenty years old, and there may be some potential for a cost savings recovery up there. The, for Commissioner Kukoski, I did look up House Bill ninety, two-ninety-five, that you sent me some, an email on. What House Bill nine, two-ninety-five did was extend the borrowing limitations for House Bill three-hundred and House Bill seven, energy conservation upgrades. It used to be the recovery period had to be ten years of less, and the bonding could go out ten years. They've extended the borrowing to a useful life of, of the upgrades, so that, that flattened out the cost even more, and made it a little bit more palatable. As long as you can justify that the savings would go over a longer period of time, you could do longer-term borrowing. So, I'm, I'm kind of interested in how House Bill two-ninety-five affects House Bill three-hundred, and what we can do possibly with those two other agencies. But we've done a tremendous amount of upgrades, and I had some talk with Commissioner Williams, and I explained some of the upgrades we've done, so the potential in some of our larger buildings is not as significant. For us to, to borrow money, we need to be well over the million-dollar mark to make the issuance cost worthwhile, but there may be some other options available to us with regard to funding, funding energy conservation projects. And the, the unfortunate part about the Board of Elections is, it's a standard pitched kind of roof, trying to tease out energy conservation by adding additional layers of foam, you know, on flat roofs, you can, you can get foam that's already, the thickness is decided, it's already angled, and you can add extra installations at the, you know, the roof, and it saves you money, so you can cover that on the energy conservation. We did that at the Transportation Center, and it comes all preformed, and it, you know, brings in the, the proper runoff or anything else, but Board of Elections isn't ripe for that, that kind of roofing.
They could take a look at the HVAC.
Yes.
That's one unit that does need to be replaced at the Board of Elections.
You may want to replace them all while you're up there, I mean, depending on the age of them, and depending on the potential savings, even though a couple of the units may have a few years left in them, we may be able to tease out enough savings to justify a complete replacement of all the systems.
Well, with our meeting with Johnson Controls, they're actually going to do the study for free, too. That was one of the questions we had last week.
They, they don't do the engineering, they come in and they make an estimate.
Right.
At the point where they make an estimate, then you have to commit to the engineering. If you don't do a project, then you have to pay them for the engineering. Pretty standard, we've, we've done these before. The, the, I just wish we had more facilities. These are good projects. We, we were able to do, you know, three million dollars worth of work almost the last time, and by the time we get done, I think we have a few more years, we'll be able to have paid that off with just the energy savings. So, only one year in the last few years, we missed it by, by a few ten thousands, that's because the, the building got out of balance here, and we've rebalanced the building, but all in all, it's been an excellent project that's, that's paid for itself.
Well, similar when we did all the remodeling up here, and having the windows all sealed, and, you know, what we did to this project, fourth and fifth floors, so, that was our last energy savings project, I believe.
I think we completed that in two thousand and six. So, there's, there's some potentials there, but, you know, the, the big buildings have already been, have already been taken care of, and, and, you know, I even had them out at the airport. Unfortunately, there's, while we can do some lighting upgrades and things like that, we just can't, we just can't gain enough economies to make the project worthwhile under this specific Ohio Revised Code requirement.
Well, let's go back with the issue, is moving forward on the route to Cleveland.
I have a motion and second.
I have a motion in second. Do you have any other questions or concerns?
I, I've been receiving a lot of calls from individuals, too, that are quite upset that we're going to go through and create a route to Cleveland when we're not having the routes here in the county as well, so. People missing, would like to see the routes increased here in the county so they could get to the doctor's appointments. Actually, a lot of calls from JVS students saying, you know, we have a difficult time getting out to JVS because there's really no transit going out there in the evenings and that, so.
I've had a mixed bag, I've had a mixed bag of phone calls both ways on it, so it hasn't been, you know.
If this is to be successful, as you hope it, it will be, will this not increase our opportunities for bringing additional route within the cities and, and throughout the county?
It, it could. I can't say that it will. Remembering, I'm responding with this information about this routing because of inquiries by this board. And so if, this wasn't something I brought to you, this is something this brought, this board brought to me to try to develop, not all of you, but some members of this board. The, if, if, if there's concerns with the other part of service, all I can say is we ran those routes for a long time, and we couldn't find the ability for those routes to be sustainable. And while, while I, I think that the, it's very, very important to get the students to JVS because we're good partners with them, JVS is responsible for getting those students to JVS, not the public transit system. But if we could collaborate with JVS, we could put routes on if JVS wanted to fund some of the cost of getting those buses out there.
Just like we are for Lorraine City Schools, a couple years ago, we worked over a year on that project, didn't go anywhere, but those were discussions we had with them.
Correct, and, and it should've went somewhere, because if you, you're not allowed to transport students exclusively, because you will not get federal match dollars on that. But if you put on routes that they, that, that go through that area, and they use vouchers, and the system is open to anybody to ride the buses, you will get federal match dollars to do that.
They don't do point-to-point.
Well, it's not just point-to-point, you have, you have to allow public access onto those buses. The, and, you know, we worked, I forget how long in that one up for Lorraine, when they were consolidating both the, the high schools and, and routing, and, and then they decided they weren't getting the cost savings they needed from consolidating the two high schools, so then they want to be bothered with, you know, trying to transport, or at least put in something that allowed transport from the south side of Lorraine to Admiral King at the time when they consolidated. There's, there's a lot of potential for huge collaborations that can bring more federal dollars into the community, but nobody really wants to make that sacrifice, because it's, it's very difficult and challenging, but it can be done.
I know with JVS, it's more of the evening class, so it's going to be with adults, not the-
Well, that, that, I agree with you, that's, that's an issue with the adult education learning, that's a whole nother issue, and, and getting them down there could be, could be something that we need to deal with. Let me say this, if they're eligible for, for ITAs under weird dollars, we have the ability to work with them on the transportation issues with, with workforce development dollars and, and individual training accounts. But the problem we run into with that is the transport becomes so expensive because there is no option. But the, so we can assist those folks, too, but having a transit route out there would certainly help. And I met with Eric Nuremberg with regard to the Oberlin route, which is very close to the JVS issue going through Oberlin, and, you know, we're talking about, you know, whether we can continue that partnership with Oberlin and, and what the cost would be. The Oberlin's been an excellent community to work with, they've, they've put some money where their need is to partner with us, and, you know, it's gonna take more partners like that if we're going to be able to increase, increase the service.
Well, maybe when we're meeting with Glenn Faircloth, the new superintendent, we can discuss some of those issues with him.
Well, that'd be fine. But again, getting, getting, getting Cleveland service and getting it over there. Now, I understand that, you know, we're looking at Lorraine and the area right now. I think that there's, there's good ridership potential out of Avon, Avon Lake over on the Leonaga eighty-three corridor. I do see the park and ride there, and people are carpooling out of that park and ride over there, because there's usually five to six cars every day or more in that small park and ride off the eighty-three bypass there. And I understand, and I haven't gone there yet, but we have quite a few Lorraine County cars in the park and ride lots further east with RTA. There's CMAC money that's available for the potential to put in a park and ride up there, but there's no sense looking at the CMAC money if we can't get a service and then start running the service and see if we can't generate ridership.
It goes to one NOAC meeting and knows it all now.
The, I know it all before I got there, Ted. But there's, there's no sense, there's no sense doing that if we're not going to be committed to some service. And, and the only way we can be committed to service is we have to run some test routes for, for a period of time and, and see if the counts are there. The, you know, I'm encouraged that, that, you know, that, that they're talking with RTA and so forth in that area, and RTA used to come through there over in that area, because there was ridership there. But no transit system, and I'll, I'll state this, no transit system I'm aware of, and I'm not aware of all of them, but I, I've talked to enough of them, is ever self-sustaining. They, they always have additional resources and revenue streams that are supporting, you know, portions of their operations. The, it's, do we want to put the service on, and do we want to have a Cleveland connector? And remembering, if you don't do it up, up here, you know, you're gonna be a little challenged down in North Ridgeville and, and the southern end down there. The north, if the North Ridgeville line can be successful, you, you now have potential for linking up with, with the airport so people can take that out. Because if you leave the commercial complex and you go down to North Ridgeville and you stop at a park and ride there, and you go up into Cleveland, you're within just a few, few minutes of dropping down to that airport.
That email I think we all received yesterday was about an airport run, at least I received, I don't know if anybody else did, but.
Well, you know, the, at least if you can get somebody-
In Ridgeville or something?
Well, if you can get somebody to drop you off at, at that facility on fifty-seven, you can get the rest of the way to the airport from there. Again, is people gonna take it? I don't know. I can tell you this, a lot of Oberlin students took the airport connector when we were running out there from, from, from our other routes, but we, because the ridership wasn't huge, we, we dropped that service into reductions. Are these things gonna generate enough revenue to pay for themselves? I, I, I don't think so. We'll get close, the potential's there, but completely self-sufficient.
The advertising dollars is probably the kicker that's gonna make a difference.
If it comes in.
Right.
If it comes in.
Well, how about we hold on to this for another week? Get some more questions answered if we have more.
What questions do I need to be prepared to answer?
Well, I think he's concerned about, you know, the vehicles that we need to purchase for the sheriffs in DR and the building upgrades, and, you know, where are we gonna get the sixty thousand dollars for the test run?
Let me say this, you know, I gave you sixty thousand as a cost to run the line. That cost is all, that's a full absorption cost for running that line. The, so even if we got no Fairbox, it's half of that.
Thirty thousand general fund, if we get fifty-fifty money.
Now, what happens is anything on Fairbox, you take-
Will be doubled.
No.
No.
The Fairbox is taken off the top before you split with the FTA. Now you can see why you have a problem with local dollars and why, even, even if I had every bus full, and if it didn't, if it would come up a thousand dollars a month short, the FTA's not matching that Fairbox. If they matched that Fairbox, we could run, we could run a profitable line. They, 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 they match what's left after you subtract Fairbox from the cost, and then you get net operating cost, and then you have to divide that and match it with local resources.
I thought that was doubled.
I wish it was.
I wish it was, too.
And this is, this is where the problem comes in, you know, the, the-
It's government accounting.
Excuse me?
It's government accounting.
Well, you know, again, they, they want to partner with you, but they don't want you just to be using Fairbox and federal dollars. They want a commitment of, of, from the community of a certain amount of local resources. How you generate those local resources is up to each community. That's why advertising, you can't run your system on advertising, but it's certainly, you know, if you bring in some of that revenue, that, that's what you use to match some federal dollars and, and offset some of those costs. But Fairbox alone is not gonna be enough to match the federal dollars and, and keep the reliance upon some assistance from local dollars, it's just not there.
So you're talking thirty thousand dollar general fund?
At, at a maximum. The, the, I anticipate from the numbers I'm looking at, as I told you, between three and four thousand dollars, with a very conservative rider, rider estimate. So if we got to the low end of that, at three thousand, you're talking six months, you're talking about eighteen thousand dollars. But, you know, I can't guarantee you butts in the seats. I can, I can just tell you that we're never gonna know unless we, we give some, some ability to, to test this out.
Well, I, I know one of the things that we need to keep in mind, we'll wait for next week, but if we, it's true that if we don't do something with our buses, we will have to donate them to other communities.
Well, there's no doubt about that. The, we're, we're being pressured significantly to, to deal with those, with those, the bus issues. I, I was, I had some discussions and during the week, and there may be some options to loan or lease those buses to another transit service. Problem with that is, once we deplete that rolling stock, I don't think we're gonna be able to get more rolling stock, because we won't have the match money to get it. So I'm trying to hang on to that rolling stock, even though the buses will be two or three years old before I put them in the service, they'll still be new. And the, the, so if we, if we transfer a loan or whatever we come up with on that rolling stock, it's gonna be depleted while it's being used. And we don't have the local dollars right now, and the programming is not sufficiently there to assist with big capital purchases right now. We got those buses under the stimulation, stimulation, the stimulus dollars and some of that, the, the money that came in to be able to support transits that were in that, in that stimulus package. But if, if I don't give them a plan to do something with them, and I, I mean, like two hours ago, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna force us to, into doing something with them. This is an ongoing, every, every few days inquiry. But I can't submit the plan to them because the, I don't want to give them the expectation and then not be able to deliver. I believe if I tell them we're gonna make test runs on a few of these things, and we're gonna hold on to that rolling stock to see if we can build consumer demand, they'll at least wait until after we've done that for several months before they force the issue with us.
And we have about, would you say, as far as dollar amount in buses that we have sitting, or how much are-
Oh, we probably got a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of buses, the-
That we would have to donate to someone else?
Yes. The, we had, we, we had, I, I pushed three buses into service just recently when we reached the, the early end of depletion on, on some of the rolling stock, so we put some new stock out there. The, the, clearly, it's gonna be some time, given the route, the limited routes that we have, that I can get to the other rolling stock. So if, you know, I forget what we paid for each one of those buses, but I think they were in the neighborhood of, you know, fifty, sixty thousand, seventy thousand dollars, and, and so we have them sitting in, you know, it's just for, so we don't get, somebody doesn't have this, they're not sitting outside in the weather, and we have them in, you know, in a, a cold storage inside and laid up correctly so that, you know, we don't have any deterioration on them, and it doesn't take long for us to prep them and get them back out into service.
So we're talking about spending about thirty thousand dollars in general fund money to save a couple hundred thousand dollars in assets?
Could be.
Basically.
Could be.
And an opportunity for some people to go to school and work and-
There, there's some potential. The, the, again, I, I agree with you, I, the reason I'm, I'm, I'm not saying, being stronger on that is because I just don't know, there's too many variables for, for us to know. I'd love to go by the Board of Elections and see twenty cars parked back there, because they all got on the bus and they, they went. And, you know, and, and Commissioner Williams knows what I know down in North Ridgeville, you can go find twenty cars over at Great Northern in that parking lot with the number from, from Lorraine on the back of them. Convenience is gonna be an issue for these folks, and consistency is gonna be an issue for these folks, and if we're gonna be able to build ridership, but it's not gonna happen quickly, it's gonna take some time. And we gotta have a place for them to park that's safe, that they feel safe, and for those people that are being dropped off, we gotta have a shelter for them. Now, we do have four shelters that we purchased some, some years back that I've had in the warehouse, that I can have assembled and put on site. The good thing is that we're putting them on hard surface, so I don't have to worry about a pad being poured and et cetera, et cetera, which takes time, and it's, it's usually problematic finding an easement to put the pad on, and these will be anchored right off the parking lots, and so we, we do have the shelters that can be put up also. That, that doesn't cost us a lot, because we own them and we use our maintenance team, and they've assembled those shelters for us before.
Did any of this discussion help you with your decision, or do you still want to wait till next week?
I, well, I still want to take a look at the, you know, finances as far as going with the, the maintenance of the properties, the sheriff's vehicles. Also, I think, I'm gonna go back, I think it would be more beneficial to go start in North Ridgeville, because we already know we have a client base there, versus starting up in a new area, trying to get service where we have so many variables.
Actually, I can't disagree with starting, or at least putting a service in North Ridgeville where you start, that's for the board's decision.
We don't have verification from those in North Ridgeville, though, right?
You don't have a location for us to set on that.
Well, that's what I was just gonna say.
Right, because we can do what we want, till we had a location, we have a location with the Board of Elections.
I, I have had a brief discussion with Dr. Church with regards to the parking lot on the, the new distant learning there on, at the intersection of four eighty and Turnpike and so forth. While he was, you know, he was somewhat thinking we may be able to make something work, he also believes that that parking lot's gonna be very challenged with parking. They're moving a lot of their engineering program into that, into that facility. It's a, it's a quite sizable facility. But I did suggest that maybe we're in the back corner of that parking lot, and he says their, their studies from, from what they believe their, their market penetration's gonna be down there may compromise our ability to do that. He and I, we're gonna sit down and have some, some discussions, but that construction's still a few months away from being complete back there. I have scouted quite, quite a number of areas there, and while there's property, it's undeveloped property. The, the only other resource I was able to find, and I haven't talked to the folks down there yet, may be potential with the softball field up there to get some parking up in that area, but I don't know how that would work when they have the facility under full use. I have not had discussions with them, though, and that's close enough where it, it could work for us also.
What about the, the drive-through, the autorama?
The, the, the autorama would, you know, I suppose we can have some discussions with them, but I don't, I don't know if they want to be, well, they're closed afterwards, but-
They got one more weekend.
Well, they, yeah, they, they'll be opening the weekends until October, but-
Right, but they don't open until, you know, in the evening, so, I mean, if they're-
I, I guess I could have conversation with them, the, it's not too difficult getting down and in there and, and back out. The, the, be interesting parking down there, but, you know. But certainly, remembering that if that route works, once, once we hit November, you're gonna have to start thinking about who's gonna plow out the routes in there and all that, back in there with that, with those mounds and the chip and seal back there, we're gonna have to have an area that, you know, we can, presents at least somewhat a safe environment, and my concerns back there would be, are they gonna put the lights on in the, in the evening? By, by November, it'll be dark and, and, you know, five-thirty, and security may be an issue down there with, with, with the vehicles and things like that. I was looking for something that was gonna be lit, hard surface, but it could be a temporary option, I'm not just, just counting it right off the top. But we need, we need something that's gonna be, where people don't mind going there and leaving their vehicle and getting on the bus. And so I think, I think Northville has a huge potential, and I agree with you, I think there's ridership there that offers us immediate access to that, and you've talked to Mayor Gillock, and he seemed pretty excited about that, too, just getting that location down there. The, the further we have to get away from four eighty down there, the more complicated and challenging it becomes, plus- it becomes, plus our, our paratransit costs become more significant, uh, that we have to meet that federal requirement on. There is no easy solutions, Commissioner.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Did I make a motion already?
There's a motion in a second.
Can I withdraw it?
I'll withdraw mine.
If you'd like. Okay. Still hold for a week?
Yes.
Commissioner Kordes, can I administer?
Commissioners, we, uh, we need to get this approved. This is the CDBG revolving loan fund report. You're, you're all on the CIC, you've seen this.
We approved this last week.
Well, I don't know why it was given to me again to be approved as I walked in here.
No, the CIC-
Oh, you did on the CIC.
The CIC last week.
Oh, the CIC, yes.
I thought it was supposed to be on the agenda this week, we didn't see it, so I thought something-
We, we, we had a cross at our end. And so they handed it to me this morning, and apparently we're pushing some timeframes. The CIC has approved it, you're all on the CIC. This is more pre-functionary than anything else, so I would ask that we just approve this so we can get it down to the state.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Skalsky.
Aye.
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 I have no additional comments, ma'am, thank you.
Mr. Ennis, Assistant County Prosecutor?
Uh, Commissioners, unfortunately, I have several matters of pending and imminent court action that I would like to discuss with the Commissioners in the executive session.
Okay.
Commissioner's report.
Uh, Mr. Cordes, as I briefly spoke to you yesterday, um, received quite a few calls from residents, uh, that do not live in the city of Lorraine that got the rate hike for their sewer bills.
Both you and Commissioner Williams spoke to me yesterday on that.
Um, what can we do as the Board of Commissioners to, uh, help those residents who are in that position of the, the rate increase?
Please, just bring something up, uh, just for everyone to understand, sis. What I got was an actual letter, and, um-
Did you get the letter that got sent to the residents?
Yeah, I did get a copy of that.
Okay, yeah.
And what I received was from a resident that lived in the city of Lorraine when they got the eight percent increase, uh, for, um, same amount of use in the city of, um, Lorraine and now in their new residence in Amherst Township. It went from a thirty-six dollar bill to eighty-five dollars. And then with the city of Lorraine is going to do additional increases of eight percent for the next three years with the additional one and a half percent. So in two and a half years, basically, uh, the individual's gonna go up to a hundred and seven dollars just for her sewer bill alone, which to me is outrageous and really price gouging.
How long have we been having these discussions, Mr. Kordes? Now, two months?
Well, we're having discussions we shouldn't have, have to have.
Right.
Okay. Uh, there appears that, um, you know, in a far-off distant galaxy, a long time, time ago, the, the, uh, but several decades ago, when relationships were entered into with the city of Lorraine and various areas of the county that were being sewed, um, that they never journalized the relationship with regard to services in those areas with a formal contract.
Like for flow agreements, are you talking about?
Correct.
And rate, yes.
Rate agreements.
You know, now, just to explain this, because, you know, people like to be overly critical immediately, none of that's happened with this board, and none of it's happened since I've been the administrator. We, you know, we've, we've always had a, uh, agreement that we worked on prior to. In the early two thousands, we, we thought we fixed a lot of that stuff, especially over, you know, in Amherst Township with, with the, uh, that, that extension sewer, and when we worked on the potential for a west side or, west side interceptor sewer. And so we've, we've, we've done those relationships and, and, and journalized those with, with contracts and understandings. The central portion of areas in the Robin subdivision, Sheffield Township, uh, and, and some other areas that are nearby, there doesn't appear to be any, any agreement. And those sewers have been in the ground for eons. So the, not only, uh, is, is the city looking at, or has raised those rates, they've also vindicated to us that, uh, our sewer district owes them a significant amount of money. Uh, where are they getting that from? I, I really don't know. I, I did have some, um, I want to call unofficial short discussions with the new safety service director over there on this. I, I also had some quick discussion with the mayor when this happened and the residents' rates were raised, which we didn't know anything about, but we did hear about them shortly thereafter. And I suggested to him that since we didn't have a, uh, an agreement in place there, that we look at the agreement that we reached on the west side interceptor sewer, uh, that, uh, was prepared to, you know, properly address all the things that should be addressed with regard to a collaborative relationship on flow agreements, and that, that may be a model that can be adopted for, uh, the, the rest of the areas served. I, I know that they agreed to do that for Albany area when we're putting in that new sewer there, because quite frankly, we were working on that sewer project, and nobody told us that there was no flow agreement over there, and when we sent it over for vetting at the sanitary engineers department. So we ended up with only finding that out the hard way when we went to do the engineering, and we had a delay because we couldn't tap on the sewer. Uh, I have not had formal, formal discussions with the city. As I said to you, those things are out there in conversations that I've had with them for a potential, uh, solution, uh, but the, the board has not given me formal direction in what they want to do. I, I was just hopeful that maybe something could be done easily, but it may not be, uh, it may not be achievable that way.
And whatever agreements, I mean, in my discussions, uh, city council is on recess this month anyways, there isn't anything that could be done that would get any type of approval. Because when we did the one in two thousand and five or two thousand and six on the west interceptor and that negotiation, you and I ended up in there-
A couple months.
-in the executive session and getting it done.
Yes.
Discussing the legal parts of it.
And what, what is the percent for the other?
I believe the, uh, the percent on the west side interceptor was a hundred and twenty-five percent of in-service rate. I, I, you know, I, I proposed that real quick, I haven't backed up and looked at it, uh, but it, I know it was a, something that everybody found acceptable. Uh, twenty-five percent, uh, I want to call it a kicker for out-of-city residents, doesn't seem terrible to me because you're using inner-city services, and the theory there is that, you know, they, you sell your services outside your area, that stops annexation and so forth. Uh, so it seemed fair and reasonable.
And currently over in the Hidden Valley area, uh, do you know what the percentage is?
I do not, sir.
Uh, being told it's around two hundred percent.
The potential's there, they, the rates have gone up significantly.
Commissioners, if I could just add and emphasize what Mr. Kordes has said, um, the issues involved here arise out of situations that have occurred as far back as the nineteen-eighties. So when, you know, I know people are coming to Amherst and Sheffield Township asking what can be done and what your rights are, but nobody's gonna be able to answer that without making an investigation back into the facts. And going that far back is going to take a considerable amount of time and investigation, so, um-
I mean, the city of Lorraine-
I know people want something done, but there, there's just nothing that's gonna be able to be done quickly on this because we just have to find out what the facts and circumstances are. And again, going back that far in time is gonna involve a large amount of time to figure that out.
Unless we can get an agreement with the city.
Well, that's what we've tried to say. Our hopes are that we can have some discussion here and work out some kind of, uh, resolution informally, but-
Or the city could-
People just have to understand, this, this is a major complicated issue, and it's not gonna be resolved overnight.
Uh, the, the city, they're saying that they were subsidizing those homes, they could vacate that area and allow Lorco or the county to come in and provide the sewers.
Well, a couple, a couple things. First, uh, Lorco's not in the vicinity yet. And I say yet, because one day I see them, you know, being a very sizable operation. Um, the, secondly, while the city has certain things they can do, you know, we have remedies too, okay? We have a responsibility. I, I haven't spoken to those remedies because hopefully we don't need to go that route. But the city's required to be, have responsible conduct also. Uh, what the definition of responsible is will probably be somebody other than me who decides that. Uh, so I don't think that that potential's there. But, but there is a problem here. And, and there, there is an issue with, with these folks and, and what they're paying and, and what they may have to pay in the future. Um, and while I've, again, told you I've informally had discussions about this, uh, you know, I, I will require, you know, direction from this board as how you want to proceed. And I knew these discussions, which you were coming, and it was just a, you know, a matter of time. The, the, can we achieve that agreement with all, with respect to all these sewers with the, with the city? I don't know. These are older sewers. We got, now you got maintenance issues, you know, M and R, uh, on these, uh, so there's gonna be some concern for the condition of the sewers as they're older and, uh, what they may want. The west side interceptor agreement was for a new sewer going in, and, you know, it, it, it was, uh, more expansive, and we were talking about new construction. Just like Jerry said, some of these sewers are thirty or forty years old, and we start talking about service life, how much maintenance has been done on them, this is a little bit more complicated getting an agreement on those things. Clearly, the agreement should have been in place decades ago.
It's just for flow, though, it's not for the maintenance of the actual sewer, is it?
It could be for maintenance and everything else on the actual sewer. And, and so there, there's, there's quite a bit more to it. And the, the, uh, so we, we do need to sit down, and I, I don't think that a, a solution's gonna be found quickly or easily.
Um, I know, um, at the trustee meeting in Amherst Township yesterday, there were a lot of concerned individuals there. As again, this is not just a water bill, it's, um, that's going up, it's the sewer portion of it that's going up, in this case, fifty dollars a month, basically, for one individual. And you could be seeing upwards of, depending on how much you use, you know, a hundred dollars. That's a huge increase for it. I mean, it's, we have to do something. It's a, it's right under a thousand homes, but, um, there are different alternatives that we, they could go with, um, if we decided to get involved. And I would like to have you contact the city and urge them to, uh, come to an agreement with something that is, um, similar to past agreements on the sewers.
Well, that's where I started the conversation, Tom, that's where we end up getting Albany taken care of.
Right.
And then all this other good stuff hits, so there have been some conversations between myself and the mayor, so. But there is no city council, so no agreement can be brokered without them. As you know, council's king in a city, so. Right, Commissioner?
That's right. I went from king to queen.
Yes.
Queen here. Okay, um, my next issue-
Well, can I just back up on this?
Oh, okay, good.
I, I don't think I have a clear guidance on this issue. Uh, so, the, the-
Would you like to initiate talks with the city of Lorraine formally?
Well, it's up, it's up to the board.
To deal with the dual issues that we've got out there, the possible dollars that they brought up a few months ago to us. And then also negotiating a fair rate for those residents that go through our sanitary sewer department but are using other communities' facilities, so we can get a fair rate.
Well, you know, I certainly can elevate the conversations and, and do that, recognizing that I briefly touched on the claim that the city thinks that they're entitled to millions of dollars in back fees and so forth, right? So-
They're two separate conversations, but being held-
They're gonna hold them together.
I know they are, that's why I'm sending those, we'll discuss them concurrently.
I would, you know, if they think they got leverage, I, I won't fault them for, you know, trying to establish a superior position in, in the discussions, which are not really gonna be discussions, they're gonna be negotiations.
Right.
Uh, and this is going to get tough, tense. But as long as the board understands that, you know, once I start doing this, there's no backing up on this, and then we'll, we'll, we'll work towards a solution.
Well, I think time is of the essence, only because there's so many people that are on fixed incomes that aren't gonna be able to afford-
Yeah.
-these huge increases. I mean, they don't have a means of, of paying these types of, you know, you can't budget for something like that.
Okay, I understand.
I mean, you're forced to pay it, too. I mean, there's-
Right, there's no other option.
Or it goes on your house, you know?
Basically, they taxed them without anything, so.
Well, I know they taxed them, but they raised the fee.
Well, with no say.
No, well, I mean, all the utilities companies can do that, and they, and they seem to do that all the time. I mean, even, uh, Allied Waste, under contract with the Seal of Lorraine, every month, my, or every three months, when I will get my bill, it's up, up, up. It's never gone down, so.
I will-
It needs to be reasonable. I mean, that's, that's not a reasonable rate increases, in my opinion, so I would concur with-
Okay.
-my fellow commissioners and-
Well-
-that you sit down, seriously have conversations with them.
While we're talking sewers, and we have that on our mind, let's, let's talk about the Elyria issue with the sewer, too.
Yeah, it takes it off my report. Then, okay, go ahead.
Well, I, you know, I've sent you, you know, all some emails on that with regard to that, and, you know, uh, Elyria is looking to move forward on that, and, you know, I've discussed individually with each one of you, you know, some of the concerns, uh, with regard to that.
Can you explain the actual, uh, the project, so people understand?
Well, I'll, I'll do that in, in coordination with Jerry, because Jerry's been working with, with the city. Uh, they, they're looking to, uh, bring a sewer across those areas that are serviced by the county. Um, this is, this has occurred before, um, and, and twice before it was handled differently. Uh, one of those was, um, on East River, and another one was on, on Oban Road going out to the airport, where they, they brought sewers in and they didn't put laterals in because for argument point, they were taking the sewer from point A to point B. It wasn't really a residential sewer to serve those residents. Well, unfortunately, the, the Board of Health and, and, and those folks thought differently and mandated that the residents that were, you know, within the prescribed distance of those sewers tap in, and when they did, there was no laterals on those sewers whatsoever, which exponentially increased the cost. Remember that, Neil?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, so the, the policy was adopted, uh, by the board that any time a sewer went in that was going through the county's, uh, area, that those sewers had to include laterals, so that when those people were ordered to tap in, that, uh, they didn't have to worry about digging up the sewer again in the road and whatever had to be done, and just putting in the laterals. So, in, in a short story, and, and every sewer would have laterals on it that was going through our area. Now, this is the first time we've had a request, right, council, I think, to, to do what they did on East River Road, which is to move from A to B, but through our service area.
There might have been some, one or two lots before.
Okay. Um, the end cost, they didn't understand that they gotta put the laterals on. Now, there's, you know, quite a few residents affected that are in our service area. Extensively, they will get a free sewer, because they're not gonna be assessed for the sewer. But the deal that was proposed to the county is that they have to pay for the lateral. Now, that, that lateral cost so far has been at least estimated at about four thousand dollars, uh, per home, and then there's somewhere in the neighborhood of about three thousand dollars worth of other associated tap-in cost, uh, et cetera, et cetera.
That's not including if, with receptive, they collapse that, though.
Correct. There'll be onsite costs that, that are unknown, but they're gonna be in a, in the thousand dollars ranges, there'll be a few thousand on that to completely collapse the onsite systems and, you know, do a, you know, a, you know, your own onsite lateral and so forth. So, um, you know, the cost could be seven to ten thousand dollars, uh, per, per home. Um, now, I, this was, this was put to the agenda, and I took it off because, you know, quite frankly, another, I don't think any of the residents over there have been notified or even know this is coming. And, um, the, the, but Elyria's requesting to, you know, move that sewer down through that area, and so that's-
How many homeowners are?
I think there was twenty-seven.
I thought, I think it's like thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, and, um, I, I didn't know we were gonna really get into, to these talks today, but, uh, there's a number affected, and because they're not technically paying for the sewer by assessments, there is no lawful requirement for public hearings and so forth.
I think it's all a responsibility, like you're talking to the police, let them know what's going on.
Oh, I don't-
They should know by them, and then probably send our community development people out there with the LMI issues to see if there's any help.
Well, Commissioner, you know, we've used to see, we, we're using that money over on Albany Avenue, so I wouldn't- Avenue, so I wouldn't count on...
There's not much there, okay.
I wouldn't count on being able to stretch just the limited dollars to two big projects.
Seems like an awful lot of money, just for laterals.
Commissioner, I'm not an engineer, don't know. Uh, but, uh, my, my attention was really piqued when I saw the significant potential cost to the homeowners, the fact that we're not the ones putting in the sewer, so we're, we're not, you know, and secondly, that because there's no assessments, there's no requirement under the, you know, public notice hearing and so forth requirements to do this. Um, I don't know the, the specific legal issues with regard to whether, what your, your strengths are with either doing this or not doing it. You'd have to talk to council on this and whether, you know, our agreement is not even necessary for them to, you know, service, to go through our area to service their area. So, I, I don't, I don't have that specific knowledge right now. At this point, you may want to ask council on those things.
Did you say we, they already did, and we did force them to put the laterals in? Or it's in the process?
On East River, they put the sewer in. Now, this is years, way years ago. They put the sewer in...
They being the City of Lorraine.
The city, but we put the laterals in post. Okay? Um, Jerry, you may want to add?
Yeah. And I don't exactly recall the year, this, there was litigation in the nineties where, uh, yeah, and back then, it was the position of not just Elyria, pretty much, um, all the cities were of the position they could just extend their sewers, and they didn't have to go through the county. Um, there were issues, though, that they were going through our roads and our right-of-ways, uh, and it eventually got into litigation where, where we said, now, wait a minute, you're, you're using up the right-of-ways where we might put sewer. Out of all that litigation came through, um, this, this basic proposition that they have to come to us and, uh, seek our permission to use our right-of-ways and that sort of thing. Um, we can't flat-out say no, but, uh, you know, they, they have to try to work out something with us so that, um, uh, those residents can use the, those sewers.
Well, by law, if they're within two-hundred for the sewer, you're going to have to tie into it anyway.
Right, they're going to have to tie in, so, um, they're still entitled to charge their tap-in fees and all those things. We can't, we can't prevent that.
The tap-in fee, but the, the cost of the laterals seems so exorbitant.
Yeah, having a homeowner pay for the, the laterals, that's my concern there. I think that's, um, a little extreme, but, um, what I've been looking for, and I sent you a list of questions on this project, and I know you didn't have the answers, uh, do we have the details yet on the project, other than it's just a development?
I have not contacted Elyria. You know, clearly, we need to talk about this, so, before I take an official position, uh, with the administration there. My understanding is the sewer's being put in for future development. Do I know what, what that future development is? No, I do not, at this point. Is that your understanding also, Jerry?
Right.
For future development. So, about two-hundred, over a quarter million dollars for taxpayer, or the homeowners that pay in. They get this for future development with, right now, we don't know any business plan.
Can't they do a TIF or something to pay for these laterals and sewers? If it's for a future development?
Well, let me suggest this. Um, any, any, any time that a developer is, you know, wanting to, uh, work in an area, there's all kinds of remedies that can be sought, depending on the, the cooperation of the developer and the local jurisdiction that is, uh, able to negotiate those things. And, and so, well, some of the costs can be rolled on to the developer, some of it can be spread out over, um, different elements. Can it, can it be TIF'd, residential TIFs, they're a little bit challenging, but, uh, you know, there's, 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 there's different methods that can be deployed. But mostly, developers want the sewer to be sitting out there so they can tie their development into it. Uh, again, I don't know the specific, uh, nuts and bolts of, of the end, end use of this. I just know that there's some potential future development in them, and I'm assuming there's probably another, you know, sizable residential project going in.
I was just, I do, I don't have a map here or anything, so, just wondering, do we have a county sewer over there that we, um, the developer could use?
Well, the, the, this is the sewer that would service this development. This is how it would be done, regardless of who is...
Okay. I know sometimes you get in the areas where you have multiple sewers going down, like in Columbia.
Well, all of our sewers in, in these general areas go to Elyria. Our flow agreements are with Elyria. So, you know, we, we have a integrated, intricate network of relationships with regard to those sewers with the City of Elyria. Um, the, the, um, so, one way or another, we'd be working with Elyria on this, regardless.
Okay.
So... Direction?
Check with the City of Elyria, um, about the laterals, why, the cost. Um, I think we need to notify those residents that this is a possibility that could be coming, an expenditure that they're, they may have to absorb, um, and do what we can to...
I'd like to do it as a public hearing process. It doesn't have to be a public hearing, but at least send them letters and inviting them on a date to discuss what's going on.
And have Elyria here to answer some of those questions. Because a lot, I mean, we don't even know the answers to the questions that they're going to ask.
Right. But, um, I would like to get that information on the project, but also the project details, you know, where they think the future development's going to come into play. On that, do they have a contractor that's looking at that area today, or are they just putting it out there? Um, I think we should get that information first, and then, once we get it, like Mr. Cadel said, then send out a notice to the residents inviting them here. Would you agree with that, then?
Yeah, we've got to talk to the residents. I'm not going to, I can't support sending a sewer and laterals and bills that they're not aware of.
We clearly understand...
We're a mob in here, so...
Well, you understand why I took this from the, you know, from being agended and, and highlighted those issues that I thought were, you know, relevant for you to be concerned about.
As David was showing, I mean, there were pitchforks.
Well, yeah, yeah. Uh, so, I will, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll talk with the city's administration and, and relay some concerns. I, I think that a first step would have them give us the additional information before we do anything with the residents. Clearly, we need to do some, some due diligence and notifications, and we may very well be able to require them to do it as part of our agreement with them on how they handle this. So, I, I did not want to contact Elyria and start having discussions until we had a discussion, and, and, uh, so, I, I understand the position of the board.
Are we done talking sewers?
We're done. Your report.
It's on my report, that's what I thought. Um, I just received this email, it's, um, from Great Lakes Trucking. They are having a job fair actually tomorrow, August sixteenth, from three to six, and their address is two seven seven four zero, Royalton Road, which is Route eighty-two in Columbia Station. They said they have over two thousand job openings. Forty-plus companies will be there, taking applications and hiring truck drivers, equipment operators, and oil and gas workers. Uh, this event is a must for those who have experience in the industry and are looking to begin a new career. Uh, it's free to attend and no need to register. It says be prepared to fill out applications and to talk to recruiters. Their, um, phone number, if you have any questions, is eight six six nine three two three four three six, and it's W W W dot Great Lakes Limited, El, no, Great Lakes S T D S. No, not S T D. Great Lakes T D S dot com, not S T D. Also, I received a email, and I'm going to have to put my glasses on, because these are really small. Uh, Western Reserve Land Conservancy, um, they're going to have their second annual of convening of Ohio land banks, and did any of you attend the first one? No? Um, I think we should probably get this out to all our board members for the land bank. Um, it says, uh, Western Land Conservator, Conservacies, Thriving Communities Institute, and Cuyahoga County Land Reutilization Corporation are cosponsoring the second annual convening of Ohio land banks in November. Um, it's going to be Tuesday, November twenty-seventh, at one o'clock and running through four-thirty. So, they won't even take registrations until October first, but I wanted to make sure that, uh, everybody on the land bank gets a copy of that. If you could forward that on to everyone for me. And, uh, I think that's, and then my report.
Cool.
It was a long one, wasn't it?
Yes, love talking about sewers.
Yeah, right. That trash, right?
First of all, for our summer report, congratulations, Tiana Madison, gold medal winner.
That was awesome.
That was wonderful. Uh, this past week, we had, uh, Noacka, wasn't a whole lot of Lorraine County business, but we did have executive committee prior to some small issues, so, Mr. Cordez, if you enjoyed yourself, I think somebody woke you up once. Third of all, Lorraine County should really have your agenda.
I did find out how much it does cost to paint a bridge over...
Yes, you did. I couldn't believe it, yes.
Route two, Eric Nuremberg and I decided that, uh, we're in the wrong career, we have the wrong careers, we want to go into the bridge painting business.
It was three bridges, though, for the three-point-four million dollars. I think it had three bridges in total.
It could have been thirty-two bridges for the amount of money they're paying, uh, but we're definitely exploring the potential of being in the bridge painting business.
Uh, also, we had Team Lorraine County Executive Committee meeting, uh, just planning going forward, reviews on projects. Again, today's L and W presentation was one of those. Solid Waste Policy Committee met. We have our white paper that's been put out by the County Commissioners Association with input from all the solid waste districts. Uh, actually, receiving an email, the Ohio Department of Natural Resources is now a part of the EPA, correct, Keith?
That's correct.
So, they're consolidating at the state level, and we have notifications of all new people to contact. Uh, we received the money from the airport, Sherrod Brown's office, and now it's yours that we are aware of, so that means we'll have all three taxi lanes done this year, A, B, and C, they'll be finished now. Will beat the construction season, it looks like.
We're hoping, okay? Uh, this was a nice injection of capital, but, uh, since you're talking about the airport, let me say this, we, we still need revenue assistance and operating money from the FTA, which mandates that we run this airport. This isn't discretionary, it's not, you know, the board's little airport that they play with. Uh, they mandate that we operate this airport and keep it open, uh, but yet we don't receive sufficient operating dollars, uh, to assist us with that mandate.
Also, I spoke to Bob McDonald from Ron Nabokowski's office, I didn't get a chance to talk to Lisa, she's got back from vacation, but do we receive fifty-four thousand dollars, Lisa, the first of the month, from Nabokowski's investment account? Bob, if you can, Bob's saying yes.
Bob McDonald, Deputy Clerk of Courts, Ron Nabokowski's office. Uh, at the end of each month, we send up disbursements to, uh, the general fund and other funds, and at the end of last month, we, there was an additional fifty-four thousand dollars in interest income, because we had closed out our bond account. Uh, the state auditor said that since we don't have the training to be invest, investors, we couldn't have the bond account. We managed over thirty-three months to collect seventy-seven thousand dollars in total. In two thousand and ten, I believe, uh, the county received an, an extra twenty-three thousand dollars, then we closed out the account. There was an additional fifty-four thousand dollars. So, a total of over thirty-three months of seventy-seven thousand dollars because of Mr. Nabokowski's investments. Unfortunately, the state won't let us do it anymore, so, instead of getting a percent or a percent and a half on the three million dollars we had in the account, we're down to getting about a tenth of a percent.
Ten basis points. Wow, what a great day.
So...
All right, thank you.
But Ron was innovative to try to bring additional dollars to the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, since we're talking about money, we did get, uh, from Fitch's, our bond rating, uh, one of the bond rating companies, we've been moved from a negative watch to a stable watch at this point, which, under the financial circumstance the county's had the last few years, and I've spent plenty of time in the past, didn't have to attend this time, bond presentations and reviews of the county finances, they did make us a standard, a stable rating.
Yeah, we, we were negative declining. Um, the, uh, this presentation was a little bit more challenging. In fact, it was probably the longest. It went over a two-month period exchanging documents and information with them. Usually, it doesn't take quite that long, uh, but, uh, Lisa and I were always a little bit perplexed at them wanting additional information, and they, they put us under a big microscope, uh, this time, and, uh, I'm pleased to tell you, we emerged with, uh, a, uh, stable and improving, uh, from a negative and declining. And, um, one of the things they look at is all the things this board's doing. Uh, they, not, not simply, it's not simply finances, oh, either, it's how the community's doing, uh, how the, the other political jurisdictions in that community's doing, because they're all interwoven in the mosaic of what, uh, makes the community tick. And, uh, so, I, 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 I think this is very positive news, and, and we're, we're moving in the right direction, at least the financial markets believe we're moving in the financial direction, because you see a lot of instability still in the municipal end of, uh, government financing with these markets, and, uh, this, this is really, really positive news for this board of commissioners.
That's the end of my report.
Mr. Williams?
Uh, well, um, we spoke about it earlier, had the meeting with Johnson Controls on Friday with Mr. Cordez. Uh, yesterday, or, I'm sorry, not yesterday, uh, yeah, yesterday, weeks blended together. Uh, had a little fun, was able to go out to W O B L and W D L W and, uh, do a radio interview, talk about the nine-one-one, uh, levy, and, uh, the importance on that, and, uh, give, uh, give a try at being a radio disc jockey. That failed, but, uh, we did get the levy information out there, so...
Yeah, I have to ask that, thank you, that the board members, when you're out and about, and you're doing that, police starts talking up the levy. Uh, we're having a pamphlet made with some, you know, some minor amount of information, but we did give you some cheat sheets when we talked about putting it on. Uh, please try to get that information out in your, in your dealings, uh, because we, we, we need the support. We're not going to try to put a committee together and sell hot dogs, so it's going to take us, uh, doing that, so...
You're going to go to the newspapers and...
We'll do editorial boards, but that'll come...
Later?
Much later down, so probably in October.
Okay.
Uh, the majority of it was covered, uh, previously in your, uh, reports. Uh, one thing that did come up that I want to talk about, um, unfortunately, in politics, you get a lot of rumors out there, and you get a lot of people that, um, get nervous about things, and I want to come out and just clearly state that some of the rumors that the county employees are hearing, um, I want to state that they're outright lies. Um, and the rumor is that, uh, I'm looking at going through and cutting county employees, and, um, that's not the case. We have a budget as, um, board of commissioners have to deal with, and we're responsible for handling the budget. Uh, we have good employees here, uh, we have strong, um, uh, unions and, uh, civil service protection. I just want you to know that I'm not looking at counting, or cutting, uh, county employees. Uh, I know that there are some managers going around stating those rumors, uh, just remember what season it is, and if you have any questions on it, feel free to call me. Um, I believe everyone has my cell phone number. Uh, one of them was with the custodial group, and I just want to remind people, when I came in the office, I did take a look at that, because I thought there could be potential cost savings. I spoke with the union about it. We went through, the board took a look at it, and there wasn't, um, enough savings there, so we didn't move on it. That's my job, is to take a look, to see if there's cost savings. And the thing I did want to make sure everyone were, I know how downsizing can affect people, and I'm not just going to go out there and cut those, uh, cut individuals. I know it affects families and, uh, individuals, so, if you do hear those rumors, call me, I'll answer your questions directly. Um, but just, again, remember, it's political season, and there is a tactic going out there trying to scare individuals, and, um, I'm sorry about that.
Well, Tom, you couldn't cut anybody by yourself.
I was thinking that.
I know.
It takes two or three of us to do it, so...
I know, exactly, and it's, uh, I just want people to know, because they are going out and they're somehow putting my name... out and they're somehow putting my name into it, that's not my intention anyhow. My intention is to have a balanced budget and to go through and make sure that we're running an efficient government, which I'm sure you guys are as well, so...
Which we've been doing. That's how we get a stable rating.
So...
Board for respondents?
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion, Nabokowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anybody wishing to address the board?
I think we've bored them all to death.
I think we have.
Wake up, wake up!
Sewers will do it every time.
Yeah, sewers will do it.
Yeah, sewers. Well, seeing none, I move we go into executive session as outlined by both the administrator and Assistant County Prosecutor.
Did administrator make a sound?
Yeah.
Oh, all right. Sorry, fell asleep in your report.
It wouldn't surprise me.
Second.
Nabokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams? Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.